All right.
Good afternoon, everyone. Today is February 9th. This is our special meeting regarding the upcoming ARPA agenda. I kind of view this as this is our study prep before our ARPA exam tomorrow. And there's been, I wanted to basically say thank you to Cindy, Joya, Adam, Leslie, Bonnie, Tom, for their input on what we're about to look at today. A lot of great discussion, a lot of flurry of ideas, and it really all kind of came together over the last 24 hours. So again, thank you to everybody involved on that. So obviously, we do have a forum. I can see that. We have election of officers, and our current vice chair is Tom Pennalow. And I did speak with Tom previously. He says if he is interested in staying in that role, if nominated, but I'd like to open up for discussion if anybody else has an interest in serving as vice chair of EDIC.
I think Tom would do a great job. I'd make a motion that he be kept on as vice chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Marco. Any discussion? Any comments? Okay, great. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Nay?
Aye.
All right, Tom, your robe and you're with the special markings on the sleeve is on its way. Over to you now. All right, let's get right into the meet. This is, it is a special meeting. We do, again, have a very important meeting tomorrow with the ARPA Subcommittee from the Town Council. And I guess, Joya, I'm gonna let you kind of get in and get organized, and or Denise on this as well. We'll just go right into ARPA funds. Is there a particular order that you guys would like to start in, or what we want to consider first? South Sea, Berlin, or marketing?
Well, whatever you want to do, whoever's ready.
Well, this is Cindy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Since I, since I am, I'm walking, and I don't have the document just right in front of me, maybe we start with the marketing?
Absolutely fine.
Whoever's gonna do it tomorrow, I think would be the one who'd make the presentation of it, so that you get a rehearsal before tomorrow.
Absolutely. Anybody interested in being the leader for presenting tomorrow? I know Leslie is not available on the call today. She wasn't able to make this meeting, so I don't want to speak on, obviously, on her behalf. Anybody interested in spearheading the, the marketing presentation?
I think Leslie's gonna do it tomorrow, but just for today, if somebody can take her place.
I spoke to her earlier, and she did confirm she's willing to do it if no one else is available or would like to.
Perfect. Joya, I'm, you know, and or Denise, you guys have had a lot of communication, and or with Bonnie, and probably, but might be a little bit more versed on some of these items. So if one of you guys would like to just read through the marketing committee document, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Joya, go ahead. Okay. So we are starting with a ask for the facade improvement program to replenish it and bring the balance up to the, to $200,000, asking $87,000 from the ARPA funds. And we've also asked for an additional $50,000. So that would bring our total to 250 in the end, if they give us the ARPA money for this. The program has successfully funneled approximately 1.1 million into the community through the program during the past five years alone. $750,000 was put into the program, or paid out from the program. The majority, 73% of this funding previously came from state grants and Urban Act money. The state grant program has not been funded for the previous two years, and future funding will not be for another two to three. Urban Act money is no longer available as the program has been dissolved. The facade improvement program offers property owners the ability to upgrade the visual aesthetics on the facade of their building. EDIC will typically match the funding at a 50% match with a maximum award of $50,000. We have listed and shown some before and after pictures of some notable projects that are recent. These are in Old Weathersfield, along Celestine Highway, Berlin Turnpike, as well as Walke Hill Road. So it does cover commercial areas throughout the town. This additional $87,000, as I mentioned, will bring our budget up to 200 and help us fund future programs, or future requests, sorry. We already have interest in facade money from five businesses, which includes three new building owners, and two projects that were delayed due to COVID. Do you want me to pause after each one, so we can discuss it?
Yeah, I think that would be a good idea, Joya. So discussion, the ask to the council for ARPA funds is $87,000. Any question or comments from the group regarding this particular ask?
The only comment I would have, I mean, it's good the way it is, but if you could, between now and then, find out the total we took in building permits for, and the increase in taxes we took in as a result of it, I think it would give us more credibility and the ability to get the funds from council.
Yeah, I agree with you, Tony. Joy, I know that was something you were trying to turn a rock over to find out what the revenue was based on mill rate. Any, any luck there?
Well, it's, I don't have tax information, like, for each year. So if I look at just the property tax increase, because Adam had put together a spreadsheet that he did his report based on, it showed, and I don't have it in front of me, but like, $165,000 in increase this year, you know, additional taxes that we're receiving on the buildings. And so I multiplied that by, you know, 12, because we've been doing the program for 12 years. Over 12 years, you know, we would have recouped whatever that number is. But I don't know if that's accurate. I'm not sure if that gives a, a good picture. So the way, the other way I looked at it was to say, the 106, or the, yeah, 165 per year is like 10% return on our $1.1 million investment. So I'm curious what you'd be more comfortable with.
I think we should be very careful on, on sharing numbers if we're not 100% comfortable on them. I, I think the, the council deals in, in, in solid numbers, so I think we should be careful, any numbers that we talk about. I think Tony's point is probably, is very salient. I think we could just say, obviously, there's been a significant increase in the value of these properties, which has brought in additional tax revenue to the town, and also a building permit, income to the town, and that the program does have a, a return on investment. That's a generic way to look at, unless you think there's a way that we can get specific data, or what other ideas do people, are people maybe thinking how we could present that?
And Adam?
Could we ballpark it? Could we just ballpark it and just say, we've gotten, you know, over 50% or, you know, between 50 and 100, whatever it would be, so we're not wrong. We haven't, and, and, but I think, I think that's helpful.
Joya, talk to, talk to the assessor. Fana can help you get those numbers. She just did it for the board, board, and for one of the council members.
Yeah, I have a request into her for a grantless thing already, so I'm waiting to hear back from her. Adam had a comment, though I think he did the analysis, so maybe he can shed some light.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
Yeah, so I interned briefly at the Office of Economic Development in the spring, sorry, Office of Planning and Economic Development, in the spring of 2020, well, early summer of last year. And I did my best to run the numbers on the programs. And Joya is right to note that, you know, these projects are conducted in different years, and so it's a bit challenging to look at what the accrued value is. Based on my research, yeah, and she was right to talk about sort of the lifetime change. We experienced, basically, if we remove an outlier that was, had an impact on the overall dataset, we have basically a cost to benefit ratio of 3.5. So if a dollar invested yielded about $3.5 in return, in terms of the amount of increased taxable assets in the community. And that came from both looking at the change in real estate values after projects, as well as the change in personal property taxes, which is sort of the equivalent for businesses as, like, we pay for, like, car taxes, for example. So we have that 3.5 that we could point to, that I feel comfortable with. And then the other one is that I attempted to calculate sort of what the, how long it would take to pay back the loan, the loan per se that we gave. And so regardless of the amount that you invest, if you look at it on a per-dollar basis, and we use that sort of $3.50 return for every dollar spent, without inflation, it's about seven years to make that return on investment. And we can use those figures and then talk about the fact that a lot of what's important to these cases is not necessarily easy to document. So I think we might want to also mention that, you know, it might, these projects impact the chance that other people in the community will want to fix up their own buildings, and then this improves the overall character and perception of the community. So it's sort of the combination of some of these factors that we know that we are making this money back in a relatively short timeline, and that the impacts are both economic and, you know, I suppose culturally significant.
That's great, Adam. If there's a way, and depending upon what, what the group thinks, if we want to be, if we want to quote numbers or not, we, we need to take the, obviously, there's been an increase in, in resale value and property value and benefit to the town, that overall view, or we can get more specific, as Adam has offered numbers. Do we want to put those numbers together, maybe, and include those in this report?
I don't think anybody wants to do that.
If, if that's what, just tell me, just yea or nay, whether or not you think we should be specific, or if we should be more generic on our approach?
Well, Mark, I, I will say, Adam brought up a great point. For every dollar that we invest, we get 3.56 back. I mean, just that alone should be enough to show with anything that you're getting, you know, not flatline, we're getting something back. So I think that's specific, but it's, you know, we don't know exactly, we say $1 million, do we get, you know, the percentage back for that? I, I like that. I think it shows that our investment is sound.
I would just use that one sentence, Tommy. I agree with you.
I agree. I, I think it's, I think it's great. There's not a lot of tax money where you actually get a return on it for a tax dollar spent. I think, I mean, it's an investment.
Yeah, I can maybe group together that, and maybe just like, some of these really specific figures if we want, and then we can add that. Most of these figures have an asterisk, like, for example, I said that there was an exclusion that made it so that we have a 3.5x return.
Yeah, I would just, I would just say that some of the council members really, they don't want specifics. They want to know certain things. There's a couple of guys, I mentioned their names on the council, that will get specific, and we'll probably have you there for it, Adam. But for the general part of it, most councilmen here, some of the stuff you just said, they'll be for it.
Okay, well, then that sounds great. I think that we can just, we, we talked about lots of pros and pros of the program anyways, and that's probably what's most impactful anyway.
Exactly.
Great. Adam, so if you can coordinate that with Joya, that'd be great, with, if we're gonna, if we want to put that in, in writing, obviously, or in print, that one sentence, I think that's great. Good. Any other questions regarding the ask at $87,000 for the facade improvement program?
Yeah, this is Cindy. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm driving, so this is not great, but I think we should ask for more. You have a, like, a Plan A or Plan B, but why not just go big? Because it's a great program, and I, you know, we can see that we earn it on our investment. It's, it also brings in private dollars. I mean, it's just a win, and we have the monies. Why not?
Cindy, will you give up some of your money to go over to this committee?
Well, I don't know. I mean, we don't know exactly, actually, how much we're asking for, and what we can get for $200,000. So you're saying we have an allocation, and that is fixed at this point?
Right now, that's, that's the recommendation to the council. They could cut it in half, they could give you zero, they could say, here's a million, which I doubt.
But what I'm saying is, I mean, if has, has the $7.7 million already been carved out?
I've got more projects than I do money.
Bonnie, I just have a question.
I mean, but how much, how far is $87,000 gonna go?
No, you have 250.
How far?
That's if, that's if we get the CIP 50,000. That's not a lock. So if we don't get it, it'd be 200,000, but we are going to ask that CIP, and they have been good to us in the past. I don't know, but past performance does not guarantee future results.
Okay. All right. All right, so then I guess my question is, what's the total budget?
600.
No, for wait, let me ask, what is the total budget for the facade program that we kind of expect, if we get this $87,000?
200, you have 118 or something like that already in the general fund, plus the 50 from C I C, if they give it to you, plus this 87, totals of 250,000.
Okay, thanks.
Bonnie, I, I'm sorry. Bonnie, I just have a question. I know that you partitioned money off to be presented a certain way, but if the council says no to, say, the, the Celestine Highway project, or is that, does that mean that the money won't come over and benefit the other side, like the facade improvement? I, I thought we're going for a general amount of money, and that it could fill, fill the buckets as we need them. And I know that we're going specific buckets, but I'd like to know, why, why can't, you know, as I brought up before, we brought up the trash barrels and the flags and things like that, that could go onto the Celestine Highway bucket, or the, I, I just don't understand why.
You can, you can. That's what this meeting is all about.
Right, well, that, I'm just saying, I don't know how that, I, I don't know how the council's gonna take Celestine Highway project. And I don't know how they're gonna take ours, but I would say, if they don't, they don't like the Celestine Highway at all, can we say, okay, well, we need some more money back into the facade improvement, or?
You can.
I just want to make sure that we have that, because it seems like we've got, like, this hard stop in the middle of it when we talk to you, Bonnie.
No, but the thing was, if I don't get, if I didn't get you, just the same thing I'm doing with the council, I don't get you guys something to play with, to at least talk about. We weren't getting anywhere.
Yeah, I got you.
So that's why I just threw those numbers out. You know, you could say, okay, 100,000 to Celestine, and everything else is going to facade, up to the 600. It doesn't bother me, but I didn't know what else to do to kind of get a discussion going.
Bonnie, I just want to say that, not the last meet, but the meeting before, I did provide an outline, breaking down concepts and ideas along with pricing. It, it hasn't made it to this final draft here, but that was done. So I just want to be on record for that, that there was movement, and there was items actually presented at the EDIC meeting about certain ideas and concepts at that time. But I just want to be on record for that. I think, I think Cindy brings up a very good point. I think the idea of, and so does Tom, I think we should discuss a potential Plan B. If, if they say that they don't like a certain, maybe they don't like our marketing budget, but they love Celestine Highway and Berlin Turnpike, does that mean we lose the 200 grand that we have for that particular item? I think what, that's what Tom is saying, is that our overall ask is 600,000. If, if based on advice and counsel we get from the Subcommittee, they like or dislike other areas, would like to still be able to retain these funds, and come back to them with other concepts or ideas utilizing, utilizing that money.
And that's what you would say to them.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you, Bonnie.
Yep.
Okay, guys, I'm I think as a Plan B, we should be cognizant of the fact that if, if we do have an issue that I think the facade improvement program certainly is our, our best and brightest tool that we've got.
I got it for you here, 115, or I have to?
Yeah, no problem.
Oh, I'm sorry. Anyway, let's, we'll, we'll talk as we go through the rest of this stuff, but I think having some type of Plan B to fall back on, and making sure the council knows that we are interested in utilizing the full 600 is important. Any other questions, other than Cindy's comment on potential more funding for the facade improvement ask? Any other questions or comments on that?
No, just thank you for the clarification with regard. Yeah. Thank you for the clarification with regard to the total funding for the, the facade. I wasn't clear on that. So thanks.
And I think there was a question, and I think we have, it was noted in, in this report, that there's potentially five potential asks right now. Most of them are fairly significant in size and scope, and could potentially meet the 50,000 max. Okay, any other questions or comments regarding our ask of $87,000 for facade improvement? All right, let's go to item number two. Ms. Joya?
Okay. The next thing we're asking for is a communications manager, social media, and marketing person. And we're asking $50,000 for this. I'm gonna read what was written. So, "Another program EDIC feels is strongly needed is, is in the area of communication with potential developers, businesses, and our residents. We need to sell our town telling everyone about our attributes. We would like the ability to hire a freelance slash independent contractor to help us send the word out about Weathersfield. We have identified several key areas that need improvement. Two-way communication between businesses and the town. This would need a complete database that can be created using existing information for businesses and building owners from the databases, from the tax department and assessor's office, and by partnering with the chamber. Social media, including Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, as well as the Hartford Business Journal, all need regular content and someone to respond to questions. The town does not have that now. Our goal is to develop a unified and approved message that comes from the town to area developers, that we are open for business and ready to work with you. This would enhance regional economic development efforts such as CERC, which actually should be Advanced CT, DECD programs that we can take to our community and bring to the businesses."
I, I know one, one issue with that right off the bat is, the, when the ARPA funds came out, they said, we can't fund anything that's not gonna continue after the ARPA funds are gone. And I know the way we wrote that, hopefully, we're just paying like, I hate using it like a marketing firm or something like that. I think that's, I, I love that idea. I just don't know how we're gonna sell it to the council. And, and Tony, I'd love to hear your, Tony Martino, I'd love to hear your thought on that. A lot of, a lot of people, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Just so you know, it doesn't say that you cannot, but it does not recommend it, because the town budget has to pick it up at some point, if it's a, if it's a staff person. So therefore, they just don't recommend it at all. But they don't say no, they just, they're saying, if I were you, I wouldn't do it. That's all.
I have one question on this that dawned on me while I was reading it. Is the $50,000 for one year, or are we saying that would be spent having a contractor for two to three years, let's say, just guiding us? So I, I mean, I just, I'm just putting that out there.
I, I love it, because we probably get somebody continually for a while, if there's money involved. I just don't know, I just don't know how we're gonna sell it as, when, when other departments are screaming at Bonnie right now, they need help. So I don't, I don't see how we're gonna get that across. And that's why I asked Tony to wait.
The, I, the, just so you know, Tommy, there was an area, it was out of the FAQ section of the ARPA site, that says, "Funds may be used to pay administrative costs, including payments to consultants and/or payroll to assist with the implementation of ARPA projects. This includes the cost of consultants to ensure effective project management, as well as legal and regulatory compliance. Funds may also be used to increase staff capacity in order to stabilize government operations." So I, I, I'm not really sure how to interpret that last line, but we could, we could have that ask. You know, Bonnie, I know you have connections over in Newington. I was looking at the Newington Communications Department, and they list four full-time employees in Newington, where I know from an IT perspective, they've got Chief Information Officer, Network Administrator and Project Leader, Network Application Specialist, and Application Specialist. They've got four people in that department. We have basically one and a half. Is that fair?
No, you've got two that are already here. You have a third position that will be doing some of the social media. They start interviews next week, and then we share a body with the Board of Ed.
So we've got two, two full-time, is that correct?
Right now, a third one, interviews will start next week.
Bonnie, can you explain that a little bit as to what you said, they're gonna start interviewing, and that person will be doing some of the social media? How is that?
Most of it's gonna be working with the police, because
Do?
they need, police needs somebody to do a lot of IT, but they will be doing some social media, but that will not be 100% of their job.
So how is, it's an IT person who's also gonna be responsible for doing, like, their Facebook page?
Yeah, Tom Hempel, when he was here before he retired, did that. And then when he retired, the council did not replace the position.
So it'd be a full-time town employee, full-time IT employee, working just with the Police Department?
Yes, but also helping out our side and the police with any kind of webpage, Facebook, that kind of thing. But the bulk of the duty is gonna be police.
Marco?
So I just wanted to add, so Bonnie, myself, and was it Derek? Is it Derek Swol?
Derek and Felix, right, they're the full-timers now.
Yeah, so Bonnie, Derek, and I had a chance to review some web analytics for the town, specifically for the town of Weathersfield website. And Bonnie, correct me if I'm wrong, there were some eye-opening things that there.
I shared them with the department head yesterday.
Yeah, that were discovered. And a lot, a lot of those things, so we're looking at traffic and trends that no one's really watching, paying attention to, or doing anything about. So it speaks to what we've all been, you know, referring to in terms of, we have no marketing person, we have no, we have no, you know, dedicated person behind this. I hear Tom's, you know, sentiments and others about, obviously, you know, the funds potentially needing to be not used on a year-to-year basis. I think that was pretty clear by several conversations. However, there is something in this that, you know, again, with my conversation with Derek and Bonnie, we are, we are just, I mean, the town's just flatly has no resources for it. So my question is, you know, I would love to see some money thrown at something like this position, you know, we're talking about, or at least some consulting up somewhere to get some, you know, some momentum out of it. It's literally just, it's ignored. We have nobody to do with.
I think trying to skirt away from the employee issue is really important, and I think the, you, the group brought up in the marketing meeting that we review them more as a freelancer. And the idea of a consultant was discussed as well, but you're bringing a consultant firm, the hourly that you pay versus what you get might not be a great ROI compared to just hiring a qualified freelancer who just focuses directly on the town. Tom, I think you had a question?
Yeah, and I've made this point in the past, but I, and I think, I apologize that I didn't get to review this before it was circulated, but I think we do need to hit as one paragraph, at least, in this proposal that our town is uncovered right now. We are not being covered by anybody. So we, in, in certain respect, it would be like hiring our own reporter, because that's the way that news is created these days. And so I think, you know, to remind people, they say, well, we have the Hartford Current, we have, you know, that, no one is covering us, unless something bad happens. And, and I know that's the way that the Hartford Current is working now, some of these other sites, like Patch is working that way, that you, it would, we need somebody to be writing stories about Weathersfield that then wind up on the Hartford Current website, and that wind up in Patch. And, and I think, again, And, and I think, again, we can debate the importance of that, but I've sort of feel it every day that, 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 you know, I, I know for a fact that the Hartford Current is just, and this is just the way they're operating now, they're not covering town council meetings anymore. They're not covering planning and zoning meetings anymore. So we have a lot of stories that we can tell that are just happening in the normal work that, that, that our town commissions are doing every, you know, and the town council is doing. That's just not, not being reported and it's not getting out there. It benefits the residents of Weathersfield. And it been, and it definitely will benefit people from outside of Weathersfield as well. So I, I just wanted to add that and I can suggest some language and I'll send, I'll circulate it.
That would be great, Tom. Tony?
Just a follow-up to, you know, filling in for what Tom was asking. You know, knowing how council thinks. You know, they, I mean, you could look at the board ad, they start off with grants to fill positions. And then period, and then periodically the state eliminates the grants and then they automatically go into the school budget and have to be filled because they need that program now. On the town side, you know, we're hurting, we need more employees there. There's, you know, no whiff hands or about, you know. But to, you know, get this person through a grant and then say, then after three years, we got to fund it, it might be a no. I would say, you know, the best bet is probably to get higher, you know, a firm to do it for us. And say that that person is going to relieve some work from the departments that they're currently doing to free them up to do other stuff that's needed. That might sell. I mean, just saying you want the, you know, the body and then when the time runs out, you got to add it to the budget. You know, if you put that person in there and this money goes over the three years is an example. At the end of the three years, we can show where the savings were. And then maybe the town manager would be able to justify putting in a position to cover it. Or renewing it at least to, you know, keep things going up and freeing up our, our current department heads and staff from the things they're doing to do other things.
Thank you, Tony.
Can I just add? I agree with, with Tom Carson's, you know, analysis of the reasons for this program. I think that it's definitely necessary when we think about the overall projects for economic development. And with respect to this conversation about ARPA and the potential of this falling into the budget in the future, I think that the explanation on this document that we're looking at that says that we would like the ability to hire a freelance slash independent contractor to help us send out the word about Weathersfield is pretty instructive of the fact that there is no intent to have, you know, to become, to be in a situation where we need to continue this, right? We might be interested in expanding to a full-time position in the future, but this, what doesn't necessarily necessitate a folding in of this item into the future budget. Especially given that we're being open and transparent about the fact that we're interested in using these resources in a short-term basis.
Yeah, I think that's a very good point. Adam, and then, and I, I think if we can show a return on investment, I mean, as Tom said before, no was reporting. If we get an article in the Hartford Current about a great new restaurant or a great new business in the town of Weathersfield that comes through this communications director and it gets read nationally and business floods to that particular business. That's, that's, that's a return on investment. I mean, communicating the successes of the town on a statewide basis is, is really critical. And again, as to Adam's point, this is a freelancer and the whole idea behind this was to put somebody in and fund them for a year. And if we can show a ROI in specific results, then at that point, we have a good argument to go back to council and go, and this should be a full-time position. Or maybe the experiment goes absolutely nowhere and we don't get a return on investment. We know that we wouldn't ask for it for the, to budget on a go-forward basis. But social media? I mean, if you watch any news at all on anything, social media is brought up in almost every single newscast. Whether they're talking about Facebook or TikTok or, or you name it, it's out there and we have it, we don't have a presence and that is a return on investment. That's why couching it as a freelancer and that's something that the town is going to be responsible for after 12 months, I think makes sense. I don't know if $50,000 is a good number. I don't know if that's high or that's low. Any, any thoughts on that? And then Marco, I'll get to you.
Actually Marco probably knows better than the rest of us.
That's why he's up next. Go Marco.
I'm, I mean, I think it's, it's right on target, but I think, I think we need, we need something that can be sustained. So whether it's a freelancer that's, you know, hired on a quarterly basis, you know, with some type of retainer, we need something that's a sustained effort. We don't need it for one quarter or two quarters and then it goes away. I think to Adam's point, this is probably something that we need to expand, no matter what happens. I think that that, you know, that number can change a little bit, but it's a good starting point, I think, for someone in that role. The thing I was going to add though, I want, I want to just paint this quick picture for all of you. Cause I was explaining to Bonnie and Derek, so this is something in, you know, in my day job that I get to do all the time. You know, from the analytics and measurement side, so just let me paint the picture. Let's say there's, let's say there's 3,000 webpages in the town of Weathersfield site. And I showed Bonnie or I showed this group here or town council that our top 10 or 15 most visited pages are X, Y and Z, whatever they are. You could make an argument, I think that if you looked at, like a lot of times when I work with clients, we look at, I encourage them to not look at just what's at the top. We look at what's at the bottom of the barrel. We look at, so let's, let's even just call it the top 100 pages. Cause a lot of times, you know, pages, you know, let's say 50 through 100 or 51 through 100. They're not getting a lot of traffic. Those aren't your big pages. But the picture that I want to paint is this. There are probably items sitting in there towards the bottom of that barrel, okay? That aren't surfacing to the top because we are not promoting them well. Now here's how I want to tie it back to COVID and ARPA and all of this. If we don't, so one of the ways Google is automatically working with all of our websites, no matter who you are, is the more you publish, the more regularly things get updated and published. Their crawlers, their bots that come out to the site every single day will reflect that. They'll come out and they'll, they'll crawl it and then all of a sudden, all these news updates spawn. Okay. So to Tom's point, whether it's through the patch or elsewhere, even if it's not necessarily a news story specifically, there will be webpages of the town of Weathersfield that will surface organically to the top in Google search results. But that requires that somebody's feeding and cultivating on a regular basis, those articles. I'm suggesting that here's, here's one of the arguments, right? Maybe we didn't do such a good job as a town providing resources on the website that could be fed through social media, organically fed through Google search results. And therefore we didn't, we didn't use that vehicle, that communications vehicle the way we should have. Maybe we could have done a lot better job because truth be told, we could look back at what was visited the last several years, for that matter. Especially from COVID time through now and say, look at all these, you know, results. The things that were at the top aren't necessarily the things that mattered most during that time. And the things that are towards the bottom of the list, we never surfaced and brought them to the, the top. Cause we didn't have anybody in that role to do that, to be really communicating the most important things, the most relevant items at that time. So I'm just suggesting that content is king on our site. But content also becomes king for, you know, social media and spreading and doing exactly what Tom said. Giving, giving somebody the ability to champion our town, which we don't have. So I, I think if we're just making an argument for COVID time period alone, I could show you ways that maybe in those, just those measurements of the, the results themselves, the transit traffic. Where we just, we didn't have anything going. So we didn't use our, our primary vehicle well enough. Yeah, it's great that people visited those top 10 or 15 pages. They probably had nothing to do with COVID. And maybe we should have been publishing more out there to really keep our, you know, our entire like, you know, you know, body of Weathersfield and residents updated. I'm just telling you, they would have been crawled automatically by Google reporters, whether they wanted to know about them or not, would have seen some of them. And, and there becomes this ground swell of, you know, percolation that happens organically. And it's something that I think that it can't be underestimated. We just don't have anybody looking at it. So when those numbers are at the bottom, you know, Bonnie or myself or somebody else could look at it and say, my gosh, look at the, the needles in the haystack at the bottom. Those are the things that we should be promoting at the top, but no one's watching it and cultivating it. So thank you, Mark.
So I take that you're for the idea of a communications manager, Mr. Pace?
Just a little bit.
Cindy? You're on mute, Cindy.
Just a quick comment, following up on Tom and Marco's comments. That it's going to require some input from, I, I guess mostly the police department and other EDIC or, or I should say planning and zoning. And so I, maybe if we put in, I mean, this person, this new hire is not going to be doing all the work because the content has to come from various departments. And maybe if we included in our explanation and rationale that there could be training involved. So maybe this temporary position can try, it can, part of it can build an architecture that it would be easier to maintain. Maybe you'd only need a quarter time position or a halftime position later on. Yeah, I think you see my point. To, to possibly make it a little more, to assist staff, train them, and also to try to make this architecture a little more self-sufficient.
Yeah, I agree. If, if, if part of it, they have to establish a framework that they share with the other departments on how things should flow. I think there's nothing ventured, nothing gained here. I think it's a very minute piece of our ask. I think we're not asking for an employee. And if, again, if we look at as a freelancer or a consultant position, let's try it and let's see if we, if we yield in our, our return on investment. And is it a high value to the, to the residents and the, the business owners of, of, of Weathersfield? Any other questions or comments? I, it seems like everybody's in agreement that with that, or I should say, is everybody in agreement that we, this should be part of our ask? Give me a thumbs up if we want to. I know you're on mute. Okay, we're good. Any other questions or comments regarding the communications position? Okay, great. Let's go on to item three, Joya.
Okay, third is a proposal for the enhancement of Weathersfield's gateway roads. This ask is for $25,000 to install vertical banners on street poles, existing street poles that say, welcome to Weathersfield, et cetera. Perhaps highlight events on Silas Dean Highway, both north and south, on Route 3 coming to and from Glastonbury. As well as on Route 515. The recommendation is to purchase approximately 200 banners at $125 each. That comes out to the $25,000. And it would be done in conjunction with the Silas Dean Highway and Berlin Turnpike improvements. Again, they would be placed on existing poles, so we're not looking to install poles. One comment I have on this, when I was looking at it this morning. This does not include the brackets, Mark.
To install the brackets, it's just the banners.
That's what Leslie told me about an hour ago or so.
If you look at
The brackets I found are another like 200 something each. So if we wanted to do brackets to support these, we're looking at a $70,000 ask. So we may just need to reduce the number of banners or factor that in.
Okay.
I didn't have that information.
I, I think the question for the council is going to be, who puts them up? Who maintains them? Who takes them down? What do we do when they rip? Do we have replacements for them? So I think that's a, I, I feel that's a tough ask. I love the idea. I just don't know. Those are the questions, especially somebody like Tom Mazarello is going to ask. Throw it out there.
And the answer is town staff.
And then we go back to, we need more town staff.
Bingo.
Well, I, those are very, very good questions. I don't know if 200 is, is not enough or too many. I mean, and these are things that we can investigate. How easy is it to replace those, the signs themselves and getting more information? There are some plenty of resources that we can take a look at that. I think the idea is a great one. But I think you bring up a really good, if it boils down to increased staffing or increased taxing on the maintenance department, then that is an issue. But I think the ask certainly makes sense, but from a maintenance perspective, Bonnie, what are your thoughts? I mean, I know that if it's going to go back to town staff and then we need more people, I don't want to, you know, be whistling past the graveyard here. What are your thoughts on that? And do you, I mean, or do you need more data to find out how, how are they replaced, et cetera?
No, because I bet in other towns who have them and it's the town staff would take them up and down, especially if they're seasonal. And if they're ripped, they've got to get reordered. I mean, and they will rip in the bad weather. I mean, they're, it's just, I mean, but that's something, you know, Tom is definitely going to ask, I'm sure. And that's the answer. I mean, like, like Sally always says in physical services, yes, we can do that, but something else will not get done. That's all. And then it's up to them.
Cindy?
Yeah, I seem to remember in the early 2000s, we had discussed banners on a Silas Dean Highway, but it was a state road. I think, I, I, do we know that we can install them on streetlights on a state road?
I think there is some up there in our, in our area, Town Hall. So I would say the answer is yes, because I think there's others in other towns. Of course, they're going to tell you that you're going to take care of them. They're not going to do it. But.
Okay.
Well, I think one of the things that we should do is we should, we can speak with Leslie and I can take a look at it and we will coordinate or maybe give it assign the effort to find out prior to the meeting tomorrow, what does it take to, you know, to take one down, to replace it, maybe contact the company to find out how much labor is involved on, on number one, putting them up. And number two, you know, replacing the flags, et cetera. If, if it's a, if it's a really complicated scenario, then maybe, and it takes a lot of man-hours, maybe it's a non-starter. If it's a fairly easy scenario to replace it, maybe it's a good idea. What are your thoughts?
No, I mean, they, they don't take that long to put up and down, but then again, you're diverting a person from something else. That's all. I mean, they're on a pole, they go up, down, up, down, up, down, and then depending on how many. But again, it's just, and it's probably going to be a two-person thing.
Tony, you're retired. Maybe this is something that you can do.
Come back as a unpaid, part-time employee?
Yeah, right. And you have to provide your own insurance.
Well, Bonnie, you got to put 250,000 in for a lift truck then. That's just for the flags, if that's okay.
You know, that's, well, yeah, we do have something down there. I was going to say, you know, I never thought of that as the vehicle to do it. Yeah.
Well, guys, is this an ask that we, is this an ask that we want to make or do we need to get some more information on it, et cetera? What are your thoughts?
Well, if we need, Bonnie, if we need a truck for this, I know years ago, we were talking with Northeast Utilities when they were getting rid of theirs, some of theirs, you know, the smaller ones. And we could use it like for our electrician and stuff to do stuff. So if this goes forward, maybe we can look for something like that to get a truck at no cost or minimal cost.
Julia, you were going to share something?
I was just going to say, instead of putting a number of banners, you know, let's pick the right dollar amount and explore what that would. You know, what, what the options are. Understanding the labor cost, understanding if we can hire someone to install them and if we just pick banners that we don't take out seasonally, for example. And just start with a small, a smaller pool of banners just to get a response and see if it, if it does anything.
Yeah. And the best way to handle an objection is to bring it up first. So I think in our ask, we should say, obviously we need to consider town council staffing and what, how that would impact the town. Those things would have to be taken into account rather than, than bringing them, bringing that point up to us like we're not aware of it. I think we should probably state that, that we are aware of that and that it will have an impact and that needs to be weighed out as we price this out and and figure out if it's an initiative we're going to move forward on.
I like the idea of a, a budget rather than a, a fixed amount. 200 seems like a lot to start out with. So I think that's a good approach to just allocate a budget and, and, and see what we can do with it.
It would be that quick aesthetic visual that people have been looking for.
All right, good. So we'll modify that and we'll also take into account the All right, good. So we'll modify that and we'll also take into account the, the impact on the town and staff in that. Are we good on that, Joya?
Yep, I'll do that.
Can I ask, what's the resolved revised language?
I will take out the amount of banners and just say we are looking for a budget to, to, to do this type of project. Oh, I'll fix it. I'll modify everyone.
Yeah, and I, you know, we need to investigate pricing and, and maintenance, et cetera. But this is initiative that we'd like to see. And we, here's the budget that we'd like to put towards it. Maybe that gives us five signs. Maybe that gives us 200 signs. We don't know.
I think if we give the per cost, if we give the per cost of the banner and the, and the hardware.
Okay.
Okay, all those in favor, give me a thumbs up with regards to the 25,000 for the enhancement of Weathersfield Gateway Roads. Give a thumbs up or a thumbs down? All right, Deb, you were holding out there, Deb. I see that thumb up. Okay, very good. Okay, item, next item, item four.
Video and commercial marketing. We're asking $25,000 for a video campaign in conjunction with NBC Telemundo for professionally scripted and produced four-minute-long infomercials about Weathersfield, Old Weathersfield Development Zones would be created. We could use these videos for other marketing tools and we would have to sell our desirability to locate here. The videos would be played on local access TV. It could, they could be on town websites and they would also be on NBC Connecticut as well as their website. These could be used for tourism as well and they could be looped in for viewing at the Big E on Connecticut Day or in the Connecticut Building throughout the BE, Big E event. The only caveat with this program is that the videos, because they're produced by NBC 30, they cannot run on competing networks such as WFSB, WTNH, but they are for our use. They provided a sample video that they did for the town of, for the city of New Britain, pardon me. So this would just be a way to create, you know, marketing piece for us, goes along the lines with the social media that we were looking for.
Thoughts, guys?
Do you know if we would own the rights to the video ourselves?
We own the rights to the video, but we sign a, so we can use it personally. Like we could put a video in Bikini Center and it could play, you know what I mean? On the, on the, when tourists come in or people go to the, to visit, but we cannot like sell it or, or put it on a different station, you know, for advertisement as a commercial. Yes.
There's no limitation. For example, maybe if we wanted to post it on YouTube.
Right, right, exactly. Yep. No, it can go on our, it can go there. Yep.
All right.
Did, did, did we investigate other channels besides NBC?
I have not. This person kept calling me for about two months. He actually started at $50,000 to do something for us and now we're at $2,000 per video. So that's where that is. I know. I believe Peter had talked to someone. He had mentioned something to me back in November that he had talked to someone. I don't remember if it was WFSB or Fox. And they were going to do the videos for free, but then we were going to have to buy airtime. So that's how some of the other stations run it. But I can look into that. We don't have to necessarily quote NBC 30 as our, as who we're going to do this with. I suppose we could just say, we know we could get this done and NBC 30 would be one of the options. We, we should phrase point.
I, I'm just throwing that out there because WFSB is such a supporter of the town of Weathersfield, you know, for free instances that they give us, that it might be worth investigating that.
Yep.
I'm happy to help with that if you need it.
Okay, Julia, I, I, I will say that's the, the part that I think by the videos cannot run on a competing networks, then we really don't own it, you know? Kevin, I use a guy named Kevin Guilford, who worked, he worked for WFSB. He does my real estate stuff. He does probably the nicest drones. He gives a lot away. I've never seen a better photographer or a producer. And I know he would be cheaper than that too. So I don't mind saying that we need 25,000 to do. Again, I'd be, I wouldn't be so specific like the flags. I would be, you know, we want to start and, and give the examples. And then we can go everywhere with it. We own it.
Yeah, my thoughts were also just to piggyback on Tom is if there's any way to see, you know, some samples of other videos they've done, that would also be helpful. Because to Tom's point, Tom knows, you know, obviously the work of the person he uses. We all might know somebody who does great work, but collectively, you know, review a few videos might be helpful. Like WFSB may be a great friend. They may have done, you know, kind of some similar things for other towns. We may not like them as much as maybe what NBC has done. Because the creative on this is going to be, you know, very different, right?
I have, I have the links I can share. They, they did share videos with us for the site. Share that link with everyone. But I agree, like, I think we should just say we'd like to develop, produce for professionally scripted infomercials. I don't even know if we have to say how long they are and how it would help promote the town. And I, I mean, the NBC Telemundo was just a, kind of a, a way for me to pick a number. So. Yeah, no matter. 25, that's fine.
No matter what, the odds are you're going to have to do a request for proposal anyways because of our purchasing policies.
Right, right. So I, I'm fine with, I think, just making it more generic. I think that would be, I'll talk to Leslie about it too. But do we want to keep it at 25? Or do you think 20? Tom, do you have any guess on Tom Pentolo?
I really, but as Bonnie said, I really don't have a price, but as Bonnie said, we, we have to put it out there anyways just to, to figure out how we're going to use the money. So I, you know, I think 25,000 seems really high to me.
Okay.
I, I, again, I'm not using, I, I do some commercial space photography and video. Doesn't seem that high, but if the guy went from 50 to 25, can we get him to 12 and a half?
Said it's, actually, he said it's $2,000 per video. That's what he told me. So I'm not sure where the 25, when we're saying for videos.
About the math.
That should be 8,000, Mark, or 10,000. How about 10,000? I think 10,000 would be a better target number.
Yeah, but it's going to vary. I mean, you know, you, we're talking about, we don't even know how it's even being storyboarded out. You know, is a 30-second clip, is it a three-minute clip, you know, whatever it ends up being? How that, you know, the scope of this thing, we're just guessing, right? Until somebody storyboards this out and says, this is what I can give you for that, then I don't even know what we're talking about. We're apples and oranges.
The sample he gave me was a four-minute video and he said that's what we can do for 2,000. So if, if.
I think that's.
Let's just pick a number. Let's just pick the right number.
If there's no actors or voice talent in it, we just shot a video that's three minutes long. It's got three actors and, and professional voice talent. And that was 7,500 bucks and it's slickly produced. So I think if there, if there's no voice talent and we're not hiring actors or whatnot, I, it can be, you can shoot beautiful stuff just on an iPad, believe it or not now. I mean, it's amazing technology out there. So what number should we go with, guys, here? And whatever, whatever we take off here, we should apply someplace else, obviously.
I think, I, I don't think about taking money off. I think about exactly what Marco said. It's the, it's the pre-production, it's the post-production. It's the story that we want to tell. Depends on how much time is going to go into it. So I think we throw a number out there and just say, we're going to be doing videos. I like the way we wrote it, but I don't want to be so specific. And, and I think the number's fine. I don't know that we're going to get it. We don't know that we're going to get any of this, but we have to tell our story and, and, and plea. And the one thing we have to tell the council people is that we're doing this voluntarily to, for our town. That's why we're trying to sell it. That's all.
If we had a marketing director, this would be easily that person's purview. You know what I mean? That person would have brought this to us 25 years ago.
Thanks for rubbing it in, Marco. I'm with you though. So do we want to keep this number at 25,000? Can I see a thumbs up if we want to keep it at 25,000? Okay, so we're just going to make.
One of the reasons to keep it at that is because using a free day C could also be used for tourism. So I mean, help out with that, bringing people in.
Absolutely.
Um, I think we want to change the idea in conjunction with NBC and then the parentheses at the end. We just want to make it generic.
Yep.
Okay, very good. Item number five, community gift card, Joya?
Yep, this is a community gift card program that is branded just for our town. You can only use the gift card within the 06109 zip code. And we can select the merchants. It could be the museums, it could be just restaurants, it could be locally owned businesses, local franchisees. We can exclude any type of big box, you know, like a TJ Maxx or something like that if we wanted to. There's a company called Give a Rank that runs the program. And the way they earn their fee is by adding a, like a, a fee to the consumer when they purchase a ticket. So it's a gift card, I'm sorry. So if they purchase a $50 gift card, there's a $3 fee that goes on top of that. And that's how they make their money. It is a, it is accepted anywhere MasterCard is accepted. The, if we pre-print cards, they could be resold at local merchants or restaurants. And people can, you know, buy them. So one of our ideas was to create, to, to kind of motivate this program, to kind of give incentive to it, is the town would invest or match a purchase. So the example Leslie gave is, you know, you buy $50 and get a free $10 card. And that's where we're looking for money to invest in this, is to kind of kick it off the ground. That if you purchase your first, if you purchase a card, you can get a percentage or a dollar amount added to that from the town as an incentive. Along with the gift card, the company provides us with a website that we can put on our Great Elm, on our town website, and it lists all the businesses that are part of this program in town. So they will put that together for us. So that's kind of a free webpage that comes with it. One of the things the company stated is they've noticed that when people purchase or are given a gift card, they will spend at least 50% over the gift card amount in, in that shop or in the community. Hartford and Middletown have both done successful programs with this model as well as Bristol.
I, I just, I'm trying to figure out how that really specifically helps some of the shops or restaurants or businesses in our town that are not attracting business. So, you know, the, we buy the, Mark, you buy the, the gift card or buy $500 with the gift card and you go to the Charles all the time, you're going to go to the Charles all the time anyways and use those cards there. I know you get a deal, but you were going to go there anyways. How do we, how do we use these cards to get it to the sum of the business that we needed? Because I know we talked about giving, walking into some of the businesses, giving them, what do they need? Do uniforms, new, I don't know, new counters, new pictures to make it freshen up, to make them feel welcome to the town and bring more people back in. That's the only thing I, I can't see with the, the gift card. If somebody explains it to me, I'll, I'll listen.
I don't know. I don't, yeah, I don't know if I have, if I have an answer and I don't know if it's necessarily a bad thing. If we can control where the money is being spent, I, you know, what I like about this program is that it benefits both local businesses and it benefits, you know, Weathersfield residents if there's a little bit of an incentive attached to it. You know, if you were, I guess the question I had, even if we know the answer to it yet, is would we buy the gift cards in bulk with the money and then sell them? Because I think that would be the best way, I mean, I don't know, it would, again, we're creating work for people. But if you say, you know, we're selling $50 gift cards, it's going to cost you $40. So people have a 20% bonus. We can then absorb the, you know, that, that 3% fee or that 1.5% fee or whatever it is that they charge. That, that, that to me sounds like it would be, if, that would kind of work the best. Unless, but then again, I don't know how, how that would work. You know, if, if we were going to have a stack of 500 gift cards for sale and then we just, people order them online and then we mail them out to them. But I do like it because it does benefit local businesses. Yeah, certain ones are going to get more business than others. But, um, but, you know, we can go to every business that we want to go to and say, would you accept it? And then you're going to have, you know, a spot on this website that we're going to promote your business. We can't force people to use it there. But, you know, that's, you know, we're, we're doing what we can.
Um, I, I do share Tom's concern about that. If I never frequent or never think about XYZ restaurant, I don't know that a gift, you know, I'm going to think to purchase a gift card for that. But if there's a way that we could come up with to promote, you know, them all, then I would agree with that. But I just, I just see the favorites in town getting the most out of this. That, so I'm not saying I'm not for it, just saying I think it needs to be tweaked a little bit.
Yep, and the company has ideas on how to, how they're promoting these things and how they help you promote businesses in town. So they help you with that whole promotion piece. You know, one of the ideas we had was like, this week is restaurant week. Buy a card at one of these, or, you know, you can use your card and it can be a virtual card. It doesn't have to be a physical card. We could purchase some physical cards and leave them in places for people or you just go online and when they see somebody come through from Weathersfield, then they know to add the 20% bonus or whatever that is. So there's different things, but like if you did a restaurant week or, I don't know, in May, do something with the museums or something, you know, to start promoting tourism and the slipaway tours when they come back, you know, purchase a card this week and get $10 extra or, I don't know. You know, there's, there's different ideas. I, I, we haven't explored them all yet.
Yeah, um, one of the big hits that the restaurants and beyond restaurants that use DoorDash or Grubhub or any third-party vendor like that is it's taken a big chunk out of their profits. I'm, I'm just thinking now, maybe we could work something with that too. Maybe they have a, a way we could incorporate paying for those fees for a while. I, I, I hear it's up to like 30%. It's a lot. That's a lot off, off a, it's a lot of money off of pizza being delivered.
I'm not. I, maybe I don't understand this. I'm not quite sure of the benefits. I'm all for buying locally and promoting locals. I have some of the same concerns. I think we had the Weathersfield shop local. You kind of punched a card and then you got a reward later. But that's sort of, I think, is dormant. And I, I'm not sold on it. And then I guess, unless it was something like a limited number to say new residents. I, I think that would be something that could benefit new residents. Moving here that aren't familiar with the people, you know, and the, the businesses that are local. Is the idea that we're going to buy these things and give them away or pitch them at reduced cost?
No, there's various ways to do it. We could buy some just to have some physically available, like a Bikini Cultural Center or, or a heirloom market, for example, right? But it would just be, people would go out and purchase, you could purchase them online. We would promote it as a, it's a promotional program online. So we don't have to manage it or physically hand them out or anything if we don't want to. So we don't have to manage it or physically hand them out or anything if we don't want to.
I, I don't know about anybody else, but I have a, a number of unused gift cards. You know, I have every intention, I may get it from a family member or whatever and, and, or, and they're unused. And I, that's just me.
I, I apologize, I had to pop in and out, but have we explored this idea with any other towns that have leveraged it?
It, it seems to be a success in Bristol and Middletown.
Bristol and Middletown. Yeah, I, I guess just Cindy's point, that upfront cost, putting it at risk if we don't move ahead with getting it offloaded.
I love the concept. I just want to refine it a little bit. I love giving back for our community and for our town and for, you know, we think of just restaurants, but it would also be some of the businesses have to be. And is it better to take the money and, and go in to the shops? I don't know, 15, 20 shops with a couple thousand dollars each or a thousand dollars each or uplift or almost like the facade improvement, but as many businesses we give it to to get the people back in there, that's all. It's just my thought.
And, and we don't have to outlet, unless we wanted to physically buy cards and put them in shops, you know what I mean, like with a dollar amount on them, we don't outlay any money until somebody purchases a card. Do you know what I mean? So we're not, we're not just putting 50, $20 gift cards and that are sitting there going stale. The gift card would be blank and then when somebody purchased it, our contribution would go on top of whatever they purchased. Does that make sense? It seemed like a, a, a nice way to give back to residents as well as businesses, small businesses, a marketing tool.
Yeah, and I, I agree. Some of you might not have seen, because I don't know who I circulated it to, but I, I, excuse me, I actually used one, I purchased one of the ones from Middletown and gave it to some friends and they used it, but I'm gonna just circulate a link to their website, because if you see how it works visually as a marketing tool, you can, you can absorb it a little bit better.
Do any of the towns just say, look, they're, they, they, they go to restaurants and say there's 20 restaurants and one week is for this restaurant only? So they can only use and buy a card for that restaurant that one week, or is it really more of a umbrella approach? Or can you, how specific can you get?
The company said they can tailor it pretty specific. It's, it's a, it's a MasterCard, so any business that accepts MasterCard could accept this card. But again, we can ex, you know, we could do a promotional week of just restaurants and you get a bonus or just the, you know, coffee shops, I, I don't know. Just the museums. It could be, it could be a variety. You can, you can make it as narrow or as broad as you want. It could just be any business in town. It's seamless to the business. It's just a MasterCard. It's doesn't, you know, it's, it's not like you can only spend it at the Charles.
Well, I think that the point was, and somebody brought it up, I think is a good one, it's not just a promotion for the business, it's a discount for the consumer. So this is a residential, you know, the residents of Weathersfield are getting a break. They're getting a discount just because they're going to their favorite restaurants all the time. Well, maybe they're favored for a reason. So, I mean, I'm, if it's a, if it's a way to stimulate business, I don't know if it's, if it's 20% discounts enough to make somebody want to go out to eat or not, maybe. I think some people, they might. Seems like we're kind of ambivalent on this one. Any, I need more input.
A different spin on it for you, Mark?
Please.
Something Unico did a couple of years ago, working with the town. Taking the 13,000, dividing it by 50 gives you 260 cards. Let's say we turn around and get the cards and they're good for a certain period of time and give them to social services to give out to needy families and they can go spend them in the stores in this time. And that way, you know, we're helping out needy people and helping out residents, I mean, businesses at the same time. The program worked pretty good two years ago, but, you know, everybody was getting laid off because of COVID and stuff. We did that and we were able to, you know, help a lot of families stretch their budgets during that timeframe. You know, it'd be a giveaway. It wouldn't be, you know, but, you know, it's doing good and it's helping the economy and, and our needy in town.
I like that. How do we frame the ask, guys, for tomorrow? We're a little bit all over the place here at this point. It's a good idea, Tony, but I don't think we've got enough specificity to present this ask at this point. What are, what are your guys' additional thoughts?
I think it needs a little refinement.
I think, I, I, if I can just chime in for a second, I think that definitely, it could use a little refinement, but I feel like anything where you're giving back to the residents of Weathersfield, especially with, you know, having like a younger family, like anytime there's a promotion or a discount, like we're down to, to do something with the kids and go out, you have warmer weather coming. So I think it's a great idea just to generate business. In terms of the layering effect, I think you, you limit people when you say like only this week or that week, these certain things are available. So my, my input with, with that would be to just keep it general, but it's generating business. Warmer weather's coming. I like the idea. I just think the ask needs to be a little bit more specific.
So just the discount to the family is what you see the value is. If they buy a hundred dollar card and it's worth 120, you see that's obviously just a value to, to a resident.
Right, absolutely.
I, I think I could see a value to new residents. I think it's a way of welcoming them and, and promoting our businesses. That's where I, I think I have it targeted. And just give it away, or, yeah, give it away.
Any other thoughts or comments? This one doesn't seem like it's flying like the other ones are. Do you guys think we should reevaluate and maybe look at this down the road? Or are you guys comfortable enough to want to just go for it and, and see what develops from it? You know, if we don't ask for it, we won't get it. But, you know, I also don't want to ask for things that we really don't see a value in at this point. Do you want to? What are you guys' thoughts? And if we don't go with it, I think we can reallocate that money to someplace else where we would, might, may have more benefit. I don't know.
That was my question. So if we ask for it, we get it and then we can't fine tune it, we can put it somewhere else. We don't lose it, right?
The money has to be spent at one point and allocated at one, at one point. And I think, you know, we need to be mindful that if we don't use it or spend it, it could go back. But it might be better to ask and fine tune it than not ask at all. That's just, you know, one opinion.
I think we should ask. That's my opinion.
I like the idea of asking and then giving it, and giving them away. I do like that idea.
All right, well, we, so we see value in it, but we're just not exactly sure on, it, it could go in a few different roads. I think the program is a great program and it's certainly, and if people go back to the same restaurant all the time and they use it, well, that's great for the restaurant. If it makes somebody go out even more, that's great. If it helps the family, you know, get, you know, to spend, get 20% more on an, on an evening out with kids, that's a win. So I think, you know, maybe we vote it in and just say that we want to fine tune specifically the use of it, but this is an avenue that we'd like to take advantage of. What I love about it is that it's very little presence to the towns from an employment, I mean, an hours perspective. They do kind of do everything. And we do get a branding opportunity in this. If it is an e-card or it's, you know, something that they can use off their phone when they purchase it, we do get a branding opportunity in this as well, where it would say EDIC or Town of Weathersfield, you know, whatever logo we want to give them. That was free, as I recall, Joya, right? If you wanted to print cards, physical cards, I think that cost, how much did that cost? Was that 3,000?
It's $5,000 if you wanted to get like a logo, like the ShopWeathersfield.biz logo on the card. And I was thinking if we went the route of wanting to get some pre-printed cards, we could put a sticker on them. They said that that's allowed, you know, we could print, we could print some stickers and brand it ourselves if we get the cards delivered to us that we want to send out, like to social services or someone, or even have available somewhere.
Mark, can I ask one more question? I hate to keep leading this up, but, um, and I, I think I already know the answer, but, you know, working on the mayor's charity wall, we have access to people or programs in town that are struggling at the moment, and that's where we can allocate our funds. Do we have the same system or ability to find what business, small businesses are struggling in town at the moment? Or because it's free enterprise, we have no knowledge of that? Does that make sense?
Resource, maybe the town, maybe, I think only if somebody would out, those outreach to the town somehow, I think it would be the only way the town would know.
Yeah, okay, I thought we probably didn't have access to that. Thank you.
All right, so to kind of firm this up, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna just suggest that we make the ask for this and with refinement, as Cindy said, on how and where it would be used. Are you guys good with that? Thumbs up or thumbs down? Okay, very good. And last but not least, garbage cans. Ms. Joya?
Um, the request is to install five permanent garbage cans in Old Weathersfield. The cost is $5,000. With heightened tourism in Old Weathersfield from the Cove to Garden Street came the potential, came potential trash issues. Store owners in Old Weathersfield have already reported overflowing trash cans, creating a bee and animal issue. So we are looking to curb that problem.
Would, would that be a net addition to trash cans?
Would that be what?
A net addition to trash cans. Are we adding trash cans or replacing inferior ones?
Oh, I, it's a good question.
I think some of the ones out there are pretty decent. Although, who was it? Joya, was it you or Denise? The, the owners that that bought that building where Village Pizza is, they don't even want them out there. They just said the trash doesn't get picked up because our guys are straight out and it's trash everywhere. And so they prefer not even to have them there. So, and by the way, that amount of money would buy four. Because the shipping costs are outrageous.
Maybe we can figure it out.
What they were saying was, if they're not gonna be emptied, then it's a nuisance. If they're emptied, they're okay. They, they like the idea of having plate people to put their trash, but if they're overflowing and it becomes a nuisance, then I agree, they wouldn't want them there. So if the, if this is an issue for, from the town's perspective, that they're not able to empty them on a, on a steady basis, then I can see where they could take a point that they wouldn't want them, but I think everybody wants them. They just want them to be maintained properly. Do you think that, that the Shopkeepers Association, if we provided them and said, hey, can you guys give us a hand and here's the trash bags? Do you think we could ask them to go out and, and empty them or you think that's a non-starter?
I have no clue.
Well, guys, Old Weathersfield is getting very busy and they do make trash, so there is something that needs to be considered here. Any additional thoughts?
Well, we probably do want to address how we, how the, the trash will be picked up. I mean, each of these owners has its own private trash collection too, right? Those are the large containers in the back.
I would assume so, yes.
Yeah, so why would the, I mean, is it incumbent on the town to pick up all trash and trash cans that are on sidewalks?
No.
I mean, do we have a, a side responsibility for who picks up trash cans? I mean, cleans them, empties them?
I wasn't here when this all happened, but I would assume it was kind of a deal that said, as we have, as our guys have time to do something, they'll swing by and get them, but it's nothing guaranteed. But I don't, I don't know that.
So the issue here is not whether or not they're worthwhile. The issue is who's gonna dump them, is that correct? Is that fair? Or that people are gonna make trash? I think we know that, that's gonna happen. And what are you guys' thoughts here on, on this particular ask?
I support it. We, we may get questions on that, and I think we probably should have clarification from merchants that, you know, commercial activity is gonna have, you know, create pedestrians and shoppers and they're gonna have trash. And it seems this, it seems like it's their response, I won't say responsibility, but we need to clarify who's responsible for picking it up. But I support, I support the expenditure.
I support it as well, and I think that, you know, environment affects behavior and everything. So if you see trash on the ground or a young kid does and they just throw more trash there, it becomes a problem. Now, I don't know if that is the problem or one of the things we're trying to solve, but I would definitely support it as well. Like Cindy said, we just, it would need a routine pickup, period. You know, no different than a porta potty that doesn't get serviced, right? When you're at some event, someone needs to go by on a regular basis. It would need to be a scheduled thing.
So would you guys agree that if, as part of our ask, we would say we'd like to confer with the town to find out, you know, garbage removal procedure and also maybe exploring with the Shopkeepers, Shopkeepers Association, that if we provide additional cans, whether or not they would participate, we can reach out to them as well and find out. It's just emptying a garbage bag. It's not significant manual labor. It's to their benefit, but I, I think if we added those points in there, it would probably be thoughtful. Who has, if you have, if you agree with the $5,000 expenditure on the cans, thumbs up? Okay, very good. I have a.
We'll just make a note of that, Joya, that we'll just, you know, we need to confer with the town. I want to be thoughtful because it is a realistic number. If we fill in there and nobody empties them for three weeks, then, you know, we're creating a problem. Okay, on to Celestine Highway or Berlin Turnpike? There's some, a couple of well-prepared documents here for both Berlin Turnpike Action Plan and for Celestine Highway. Do we want to just give a synopsis on this or do we want to, I've obviously read it. Have you guys read it? So Joya, do, if you want to, Cindy, just for the record, just give kind of an overall, very, you know, overall view on the expenditure, et cetera. If you're able to do that, I know it looks like you're back home at the moment.
Yeah, yeah. Let's see. My, I'm not, okay, great. So we have a funding request of $200,000 of our funding, funding for an engineer, I call it an engineering and implementation plan to promote economic recovery, improve traffic and pedestrians' safety. So, and we point out that it's a state highway and it maximizes vehicular speed, but it poses safety issues and doesn't support our economic recovery. And it doesn't maximize our, our tax base. And, you know, and point out the importance of, of this roadway to our town, to our identity, that we have town buildings there. It is our, it, it forms our image, the image of the town. We need more walkable thoroughfare to support more, uh, commercial development. And it has support of the, the latest, of businesses from the latest survey. We have a unique opportunity for external funding and we should take advantage of it. And we do not have the resources to do it in-house. We cannot do this. And if we cannot do this, we can't attract the, the funds that we need to be able to fund improvements in terms of streetscaping to the highway and improved functionality. Um, and uh improved functionality. So um, I think we should make the point, this is really um a very high-valued uh use of federal funds to promote economic recovery in our town. Um, and so uh if people have, wanna add or subtract or modify the, the bulleted points, this is what I got from our discussion. Um, so we wanna develop a, a vision, uh, we need uh and a kind of a story, a narrative. Uh, we need design, specific design plans and engineering specifications for the uh, for roadway improvements. Uh, and uh to reflect our town history, our identity, and to develop a sense of place a- along the roadway. Um, next bullet, um, we wanted, you know, we have developed engineering specifications for sp- for particular projects. Um, we need uh, uh, technical help in sequencing the uh of these engineering projects. So we develop a uh multi-stage plan uh that um builds out our overall uh uh vision for the Sylvestine Highway. Um, we need technical assistance to, and advocacy to submit those proposals, to be able to access, um, yeah. Uh, billions of dollars on, of state and federal uh monies uh that I probably should make a point that, that are that this is a very competitive process. I think I can put language in there. Um, and we need technical assistance uh to maximize uh Connecticut DOT cooperation and, you know, try to gain approval of modifications. Um, again, we need more technical assistance uh to implement the projects and we need also to promote uh the Sylvestine to private developers. Uh, so we need some folks with a knowledge of um uh potential and interested um private developers. So that's the plan and um we, I think we should point out that if we don't do it, we're not gonna get uh federal dollars, we're not gonna get funding. Our highway is gonna look the same. And we have the status quo. And we can watch other towns improve their central business districts. Uh, improves our desirability, not only to businesses, but to live as a community. Um, Tom pointed out, and I didn't put in, but we, you know, a discussion point that um, you know, our sense of place uh and importance of such a highway is changing, and it, we may not always be, you know, thinking of a highway in terms of, of just commuting from here to there. But uh more people may uh commute on, on a more intermittent basis, maybe not every day, uh and are staying home, so uh for, for work. Uh, working remotely. So, uh, we need to address uh, you know, the, our, the people who live here and who use the uh and the businesses along the highway. And that creates re- real estate value, value to our town, to our residents, as well as to the business community.
Pat, let me ask you something, because I know that there is concern on the council not to spend any money uh like this on the Sylvestine or the Burland Turnpike. Do you think something like this is gonna fly? Because if not, I don't wanna waste the subcommittee's time tomorrow.
Uh, to be honest, something like this didn't, nobody really had an appetite for it. Um. They had a, a plan, what wa- was back from the original one was two thousand six. Uh, and nothing ever really got done with it. Um, just speaking frankly, when I brought it up to uh both Counselor Hill and Deputy Mayor Mazzarella, there didn't seem to be a uh, a whole lot of interest in spending, you know, thirty-three percent of the money that we were allocating to EDIC on another plan. Um, as much as I think that maybe we could tap into those federal infrastructure dollars, uh potentially, it's still a question mark. And I think, uh, I think the committee is looking for lower hanging fruit. Just trying to be as transparent as I can.
So would the, so would economic development be able to keep that two hundred thousand, for example, for Sylvestine, but allocate it in a different manner? Or would it go to other projects? Because you know, Pat, we got a list a mile long.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so I, I would recommend that uh you find a, a different use, uh maybe Sylvestine Highway specific for the two hundred thousand. Uh, more, you know, just maybe more of like beautification projects, uh stuff like that. Um, something that the town can see immediately. I think that's, that's sort of what they're looking for now. Um, just I wanna person everybody's bubble here, but um, it's uh, it, it were, they're, they're, again, spent, the thought that spending money on another plan is just, it's really just not, I don't think it's gonna fly. So I would suggest figuring out another uh, another way to spend that two hundred thousand dollars. Would be my recommendation.
And Pat, would you think if we came to the group tomorrow and just kind of said, you know, look, we've been kicking around these ideas, but we're not sure they're gonna fly. Can we come back in a couple of weeks? Do you think, I don't think there's gonna be an issue?
There wouldn't be any
Okay. All right.
I mean, mo- most, yeah, I agree with.
Can I just add? I think that, you know, based on our discussion yesterday and all of my research and others on this subject, that this uh redesign of the Sylvestine Highway is absolutely critical to the future of the town in terms of municipal finance, in terms of culture, in the trajectory of our town, in terms of development. Uh, there was recent plans that, when we sort of projected like what the uh education figures I think would look like in terms of the number of students, that there wasn't gonna be a growth. Um, and frankly, the concern I have is that if we have a perspective that long-term, there's no development, no growth in population, uh you know, that's, that's a really, that, that's not great, right? And I think that this plan sort of stands at the core. This economic and, and cultural corridor sort of stands at the core of us as a town and our future. And I think that it's absolutely crucial, given that, that we allocate resources to be able to effectively address uh the corridor um in the long term. And this specific plan, which I would like to thank uh Cindy for writing, um, I think is actually pretty authoritative and what's best about it is the fact that we have targeted an interest in supporting engineering and in implementation. That's what the two hundred thousand dollars is for. And that is significant departure from previously uh when we had the Fussin O'Neill Plan, which gave, you know, broad, broadly discussed options. In this case, we are dead set on creating engineering plans and the implementation that will allow us to, you know, bring these projects to life. Um, and that's definitely a different aspect. And one that needs to be acknowledged here. This isn't asking the same thing as we did those decades ago. This is completely different.
Um, again, I, and I respect that and I appreciate the explanation. I'm just telling you what it looks like.
Uh, well, you
Just that in the first sentence, we've dictated this different.
Okay.
So I wanna make sure that we don't get misunderstood.
Yeah, I, I really appreciate having this conversation now. Because um, you know, this, this is, and, and I'm glad, uh, Pat, you're just bringing up, you know, it's kind of the thinking uh of council. And I think knowing that it, I haven't pitched it the right way, because it's really not a plan. Uh, it's really, we need consultant expertise to supplement our engineering department to articulate the projects and the sequencing of projects. And, and maybe it would be more targeted. I mean, I, and I, I hear what you're saying, Adam. But maybe it would be more targeted, say maybe a hundred thousand to, you know, provide the technical expertise and make the case, we just simply don't have the, the hands-on deck on, in, in, in town to be able to articulate these engineering projects. And so we need the technical expertise to um uh to, to draw the design specifications and to provide the sequencing. And also the wherewithal to to uh promote and, and to, to submit these projects for, for approval. Because that's the only way those projects are going to be approved. We can't just, we can't just ask for money that we would like to improve our highway and that we have these beautification projects in mind. To get any kind of funding with those projects, those engineering specifications, those projects, as I understand it, they need to be drawn out, articulated, presented. So I think we can reframe this as a uh uh consultant expertise to supplement uh, uh, our, our, our engineering department. Yeah, uh, department. And, and maybe we can take a portion of that, maybe a hundred thousand is if we're a direct project. But we don't know what it is, because we don't have the specifications. And we don't have the technical expertise to even be able to make that kind of recommendation.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm, again, I'm, I'm listening to what you, what, what both you guys are saying, and I certainly appreciate it. I'm just trying to relay the message that, you know, we've talked about separately as a subcommittee, how to utilize these ARPA funds. Um, again, I'm not saying that, that our minds can't be changed uh when you're presenting. But what I am saying is that the initial reaction to something like this was we'd rather focus more on low-hanging fruit and beautification projects along the Sylvestine than consulting work and further plans for possibly future development. Especially considering these funds are so limited. So to, to, to utilize thirty-three percent of the budget that we're allocating to improve economic development towards a potential consultant or a plan, I'm just, I'm just trying to relay the message of how that was viewed initially.
Right.
Trying to strike it down, you know, I'm just, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to be transparent so you guys can
Yeah.
Now, I want you guys to get the money.
Yeah, it's very helpful to get that conversation. Maybe Adam and I can work on the, on the, the language. And maybe we don't need the full two hundred thousand, because it's really going to articulate specific projects that we've already, you know, uh, um, had, you know, presented to us in a very, in a general way. Uh, uh, in the plan that we did fifteen years ago. Um, so Adam, and would you be willing to work on this um? The language of uh, we could work on the language of this a little bit?
Sure.
Pat, I can hear where you guys are coming from, with council not wanting to give money to a plant. But one of the things that the market come up with and his suggestions upfront was to improve some major intersections along the Sylvestine Highway like Town Hall. You know, like Knot Street, Wells Road, Prospect Street, with the lighting and landscaping that was done at Town Hall. You know, maybe if, you know, if they go in looking for funds to improve these corners to look like the aesthetic with the lights and stuff, and do as many corners as we could would take care of that, and, you know, maybe get some approval for the two hundred thousand. And we do as much as we could. I mean, that would include design, purchase, the whole nine yards. It might only get us one corner in today's dollars, because I'm trying to remember what it cost us to do Town, uh, Town Hall Corner years ago. But at least we can show that we're doing something and not just creating a plan. We're gonna fix up at least one corner or two corner, as many as we can with the funds we're getting.
I agree.
Can, can I make
With the council, sorry.
Go ahead, Adam, I'm sorry, please go.
I was just wondering, given your conversations with the council, you talked about beautification. Uh, in terms of infrastructural changes, if they were to entertain them, would an emphasis on safety be something that they would be most amenable to?
Is that, is that question directed at me?
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah, so we, a- again, we, we've had only preliminary conversations, uh, and we've only specifically talked about beautification, but if there was excess money, I don't too buy, we wouldn't talk about improving safety along Sylvestine Highway. But it's also complicated, because like we keep talking about, it is a state highway.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. They're not gonna, they're not you, you, they, I just think town, council needs to understand, and I'm not an expert, it's what I've been told that uh to get any kind of funding, uh, and there are a lot of dollars out there, and this is a, it's timely. Uh, and there's a lot of competition for that. We need um engineering specifications. We need a project that we can um, others can look at and that we can explain that is drafted out. It, it's not a plan, it's, A- Adam, what's the word for it? We need engineering renderings or
Assistance for implementation, and we do need engineering rendering, that's right.
Is, it's called an engineering rendering, okay?
Yeah.
All right, so I mean, I think that's what we really are, uh, that's what we need. And we need uh maybe we just, uh, I mean, it would be better if we go ahead. It would be better if we had, if we told a story and we have a narrative, but maybe that's you know, that's the best of all worlds, but if we had engineering rever- renderings, and at, at least we can have a consultant tell us, well, here are um, two or three projects that you can do first. Um, and that for, uh, for, you know, either a combination of aesthetics and safety improvements.
Cindy, ju- just for time purposes, uh, would you guys, uh, you and Adam be able to potentially shoot me a joint email of what you're talking about? I wanna keep this meeting moving along, so I gotta be out of here by two o'clock.
There's a few of us who have it too, because Denise and I do.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Let me just go ahead, Deb, you wanted to share something.
No, I was just saying I have to be out of it too as, as well, that's all I was saying.
All right. Yeah. Let me make uh just a suggestion. Um, one of the, you guys know where I stand regarding the Sylvestine Highway. I'm all for improving it, safety, better usage, but I'm also trying to balance that with what from a realistic perspective, what we can do. And I think you know, we need to find out and, and maybe the number is fifty thousand, where we can set aside and get an engineering rendering and try to isolate one block, as you guys have talked about in the past, where there's, where we start someplace. And we get this rendering, because you're right, I think you said it would have to be drawn out, articulated and presented, Cindy. And that is important, but you have to have the right project. And we have to make sure that we get buy-in and permission from DOT. There's a lot of, there's a lot of dominos that have to fall before we can get to the end use, which is a safer, more pedestrian-friendly, maybe more bike-friendly, whatever could be reasonably done. Maybe we need to think about, can we get from a budget perspective this engineering rendering and saying, we want, we want, here's the block that we pick. It's from Joya, you, you picked out a couple of blocks at one point um that we can maybe think about of improving and find out what we can realistically accomplish.
I think I wanna bring out the point, and maybe our proposals don't have this, is that this two hundred thousand isn't for a drawing or a concept only. It is from concept to construction. The two hundred thousand will carry us from getting that engineering rendering to articulating our story to putting everything to getting the community's feedback to applying for grant funding and then to getting us to construction. So the two hundred thousand, I, I'm not sure how to, how to phrase it to say that it is it's a package, it's not a one item coming out of this. The beautification will come at the end. Um, but in order to get to that beautification, we have to do these first few steps and help me articulate that correctly.
You can work on that, but I think that was a fantastic uh start. Yeah, that's exactly, I think, what we were after.
I mean, I could, you know, we could try to break it down and say seventy thousand goes to the engineering and twenty thousand goes to uh, you know, writing our story and thirty thousand goes to doing a poll and engaging CROG to help us do a survey. And then, you know, another whatever, I don't know what's left, I didn't add it up, but twenty thousand to go apply for grant dollars, but you know, that is then we're gonna get again in the weeds and say, you really need twenty thousand to do a survey? And I don't know. It's, it's, it's approximately between talking to the town engineer, talking to a couple consultants, you need to budget approximately ten to fifteen percent of your total project cost for an upfront investment by the town. So this two hundred thousand is a project up to about two million dollars, whatever that entails. If it's a a mile stretch on Sylvestine or whatever. Um, so that's that's where we're, I think, I think that's where the disconnect is. Our ultimate goal is to have beautification, but we can't even put up, you know, we can't plant trees without getting an engineering drawing, so, a rendering, so.
Wait, I know at one point we talked about getting an actual breakdown of what you just said from, from Fussin O'Neill for the two hundred grand, how much goes here, how much is here? I know we haven't gotten that. Um, and I mean, I think that's probably a big piece that's missing. Um, that it is all-encompassing, but the devil is in the details. And what we think is engineering, maybe that's what they don't think, or vice versa. And what we think is engineering, maybe that's what they don't think or vice versa. There's a lot of stuff I think we'd need to get more detail on.
But the bottom line is it's 10 to 15% of a total project. And we're looking at projects to do two half-mile sections of Salistine or eight corners or whatever that entails. We're looking at a project from about 1.7 to $2 million. Hence, the approximate amount of 200,000 for this pre-work to get us all the way through to the construction. That's the point of this. It's not to create another piece of paper and say, okay, now, you know, we spent 200,000. Now what are we going to do? This is to get us all the way to beautifying that corner or that strip of road, whatever that is.
So if it was a $500,000 project, their fee would be 50 to 75,000. Is that fair?
Right, exactly.
Okay, so this is my point. If we can focus on, maybe this block that we're talking about is a half a million dollars. And maybe the spend is 50 to 75,000 and not 200,000. And that's, the vagaries from that, from, on this is what is getting to me. There's no detail on exactly, so they came up with a number, we got a number of 200,000, everything is kind of loosey-goosey. And I think there's merit here, but we haven't tightened it down to identify, what's that first patch that we want to go? What's the lowest hanging fruit that we want to put a better spin on, on the Salistine Highway and get a ballpark? And what would that cost? Because maybe the $200,000 figure is not the number that we need. Maybe it's 50,000.
Okay, I know people have to leave soon. So what I would recommend is tomorrow, you go to the subcommittee and what you say is, you know, we have some thoughts, but we need more time. And we'll be back in two to three weeks with a more solidified plan. Because you guys are going to be here for another hour or two hours. And also tomorrow, you only have a very short time because you're not the only ones on the agenda for the subcommittee. So I would stick with the marketing that you've approved and then just say that you need more time to discuss your other proposal and leave it like that.
Pat, just so you know, we, there's $200,000 that we'd like to look at Berlin Turnpike and Salistine Highway. So the $200,000 that we discussed today, we're very confident on, it's the other 400 that we need to couch the right way to get the council's approval on, just so you know upfront. And, and we'll, we'll tighten this thing up.
All right, thanks, everybody. I got to go. See ya.
Okay.
Thanks, everyone.
Cindy, did you get my message?
No. Email?
Hey, I'm willing to hang around, but if, I know Bonnie's got, you guys have any more comments? I'd love to hear them.
So how many, I'm on my, my cell phone. So how many people are in right now? You, me and Mark and Adam?
Tom is here, Denise is here, Adam, Marco.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay.
Yep.
All right. I mean, I'm willing to entertain other comments and I appreciate, you know, what I may think pack out off. I appreciate kind of the feedback that we got from Pat Pentelow. I think it was very helpful understanding where our council is and funding this and what we need to articulate. I think, well, I would be happy to hear others. If anybody else has any other comments, otherwise Adam and I can go back to the drawing board and articulate this a little bit more clearly.
I'm going to have to run to a 2 o'clock as well, but I'd love to hear more about it at some point in the future. Thank you, Cindy and Adam, for your work.
I think what we can do is
Everyone else. Thank you, Joya, Tom, Tony, Denise. Thank you all.
See you, Marco.
Okay, take care.
Bye-bye.
Adam, can, is there any way that you can look at, you mentioned the software on the, on the meeting the other day, which I thought was very cool. Does that, does that bring in any pricing assessments on projects? Is that part of that software? Does it build in a potential budget on, on that? Or is it really more the engineering side only?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay.
I'm looking.
If the issue that the council has is, you know, they want low-hanging fruit and the number is too big. If we can, and like we said, if, if we have a half a million dollar project, then our ask would be 50,000 to 75,000. If the project is a half a million, if it's, if it's a million, then our ask is 100,000, not 200,000. And I think if, it would be worth our while to find out from Fussin' O'Neill, what is, okay, so you said 200 grand, we get it. That's 12%. And Joya, I know you talked with Derek and he said they're spot on on what their percentage is. Can you help us sell this and break down of the 200,000, what's the first piece and how much does it cost? What's the second piece? And what does it cost? I think
Sorry. I was just going to say, I mean, if we're going to be asking Fuss, I don't know how hard, how accurate these figures need to be, but whether, whether they would be helping us to estimate these components? And if that beginning of a relationship necessitates that we use them down the line, or if they're just helping us advise us about, you know, making an estimate. I'd prefer if it was just the latter.
Yeah, and, and has, have we talked, reached out to Close Jensen Miller in town? I know they're obviously a well-established firm as well. I don't know if we get a hometown discount from them, if we can buy a half a million of those cards and get a 20% increase. Trying to make a joke here, it's not working.
Another organization that has done these kind of projects where you have a corridor redesign and then does the, performs sort of like the community coordination is Goody Clancy. They have performed projects for Hartford, including an I-84 Hartford project when they were looking at sort of transforming the downtown corridor. So that's another firm we can consider too.
Okay. Well, Bonnie and, and, and Pat seem to think that we've got time, you know, we can present a third of our budget and two-thirds of it, we need to fine-tune. And we'll get more feedback from that, directly from them tomorrow on if they're, what is low-hanging fruit to them? And maybe there's a fit on what we want to do and what they want to do. Tom, any other comments? Tom Carson?